We just have one more counselor coming, so a small gallery today. Alright then, allow me to kick off this special committee of the whole for just to help work through our process on our annual report. We'll start off as usual with acknowledging, are we streamlining streaming now? So by acknowledging that we're on the traditional territories of the coast and straight sailors people, specifically the Kwangin speaking people known today as the Iskwaian, Molten Songhe's First Nations, that their connections to the East Atlantic continue to this day. For that person in the audience, if that, we are live streaming this, so if you do come forward to speak, you will be recorded and put forward on the archives. With that, we have a single item agenda today, and I am ready to hand this over to Ms. Varela, C A O.
Thank you, Your Worship. So the purpose of the annual report workshop tonight is to look at the timeline process that we have ahead of us. We want to talk about what new 2018 content is achievable. We want to talk about foreseen challenges, and we want to talk about looking forward to future annual reports. Somebody better drive or I'm gonna, there, thank you. So we wanted to put out a calendar so council could get a sense of how we were going to roll this out. So today's workshop, starting tomorrow, we're going to begin finalizing the department content. Monday, June 3rd to June 11th, we're going to refine that content and begin the layout process. Thursday, June 13th, we're going to email counselors the draft content that we have produced to date. And Tuesday, June 18th, we're proposing to hold a special closed meeting of council to review the annual report. And this is permitted under section 91 L of the community charter. When you're looking at an annual report, you could start to leap into the territory of things that impact staff or have H R issues. That's why the charter does allow to go enclosed. That was something that you didn't do last year, that we'd like to offer you the opportunity for this year. After that, based on that direction, corporate services will continue to refine the report content based on council direction. On June 24th, we have a new rule this year that we're going, we have to send our annual report content out to the auditors for review before it's made public. So we'll be doing that on or around June 24th. The 24th to the 27th will finalize the layout, and the 28th, that's our legislated deadline. The annual report will be made available to the public for review, and that will be both online and in print. And then July 15th, after we've met that legislated deadline, we'll have a committee, the whole discussion, the presentation of the finalized draft annual report, and we'll look for adoption on July 22nd. So that gives council a bit of a process in advance about how we would ideally roll this out. So the purpose of the annual report, and we really look at this as an analysis of where we are, what we accomplished last year, and how we plan to move forward. I think importantly, we recognize the annual report as a tool that we use for communicating both with council and the public, and even amongst ourselves within our own organization, highlighting successes or points that should be paid attention to, and measuring progress. So what's in the annual report? If you look at last year's, we know the front end has a message from the mayor, the C A O. This year, we'll have a message from the Director of Finance as well. But once you move past those messages, we really move into highlights and metrics by departments. And we have some suggestions for new content that we'd like to propose to council this year. We're also proposing to include two new sections in the annual report, and these are clearly linked to current council's strategic priorities. So we want to do a new section on sustainable service delivery, that's your asset management. And we want to do a new section on economic, environmental, and social sustainability. And that links to council's priority of a healthy, resilient community. Finally, we'd like to make an addition to the final section, what I refer to as the back half of the report, with additional visuals and some explanatory text. Are you having a hard time with that one, Tara? We'll just wait and make sure everybody's caught up. That's okay. Got her? Okay. No, no worries. So just to be clear, we're going to talk about the additional material for the back half of the report, which I, which is the financial section, okay? So we've got some new proposals for that section as well. So we're looking to increase the meaningful highlights and metrics in the annual report. And we see these as tools by which we can analyze service levels. We can start to talk about increasing or decreasing perhaps. We can observe trends over time. We can inform future planning. We can highlight achievements, and we can demonstrate accountability. And I think that's a really key piece, both to council, to ourselves within the organization, and to the public. This year is a bit of an interesting one. So previous council term, 2014 to 2018. Tonight, we're really focusing on content for the 2018 annual report. But we want to do it with lens forward based on current council's strategic priorities. And we've heard from council that they're looking for a continued improvement for corporate reporting. And I think when you look back at the sequence of annual reports produced by the district, I think staff has done a great job on improving every year. I think staff is very proud of their record, and I think there's a lot of reason for that. So again, we're just continuing on that path of continued improvement. So tonight, really what we're looking forward to is discussion about the new content for the 2018 annual report. And that's going to build on the information already provided in the 2017 annual report. So staff went through, looked at last year's report, and said, well, what else can we provide? And so we're, we have some suggestions for you tonight, but it's really that focus on content. So the 2018 annual report is going to be based on previous strategic objectives or priorities of the former council. There's six of those, with a lens looking forward on council's current strategic priorities, of which there are five. So these will look familiar to both, to everyone in the group, whether you were on former council or current council. Proactively support reasoned growth, focus on being well managed, take an active role in building a safe, livable community, develop, maintain, and protect our infrastructure, recognize the importance of diverse transportation options, and work closely and collaboratively with our neighbors. When we look at the five strategic priorities of current council, for staff, this didn't create a, you know, a different path in our work plans. To me, I look at this as a more focused approach. You've reduced the number, I think you've streamlined the approach, you've probably prioritized and budgeted differently. But I think we're continuing on a current path. So when we think about looking back and looking forward, I think we can manage that effectively in this annual report. We do have some challenges, however. We're midpoint in 2019. So when we talk about metrics that we want to use going forward, we want to have agreement in this group about what that looks like prior to 2020, which is when we should start using those metrics. We know that some of those discussions are likely going to trigger points about resources and capacity. And I'm going to use the example of risk analysis reporting on capital projects, because that's a favorite of the mayors. There's a lot of risk analysis that goes on around capital projects. We don't report out on it, and the reason for that is simply capacity. So when we start to talk about what council wants to see, we need to talk about, do we have the resources and the capacity? And if we don't, and you want it, you need to resource us up, okay? And that's really about managing expectations moving forward. The other one I want to put on your radar is that we always have to remember that it's not just about monitoring and measuring, which can seem like a pretty simple thing. Certainly, a lot of local governments, even in this region, have staff dedicated just to that task. We're not that lucky, but I think we can still provide you some good deliverables. But we have to recognize that we're also doing the work and meeting the operational legislated requirements just in our day to day. So you guys will have seen the next slide before, which I refer to as the 90-10 rule. Some say 80-20. The point is, when you give us the strategic priorities, it's that small piece of the pie. That other large chunk is really what it takes to keep this ship running smoothly day to day. So when we talk about adding on another layer of service, which is increased measuring and monitoring, what does that look like for us? Excuse me. So, next slide, please. So we realize this is a balancing act. And, you know, one of my favorite lines is, "Staff serves at the pleasure of council." So if we get clear direction from the council table, we're going to go and fulfill our marching orders and get it done for you. The other part of that agreement, though, is you have to give us resources so that we can meet your expectations. What we want to do tonight, in recognition of those facts, is we want to think about the metrics we'd like to see going forward. I think the way that this will play out tonight will be driven by how much time we have. But I know council wants to think about the metrics we want to implement in 2020, and we need to have that discussion sooner rather than later. So we do have two flip charts here. One is a parking lot if we start to get into a discussion about metrics for future annual reports. And the other flip chart is about what council wants to see beyond what staff has suggested for the 2018 report. So here's my cautionary slide. So tonight's workshop really is about new content for the 2018 annual report. It is not about discussing additional strategic planning or priority items. And even when we were discussing it as a director team, it was really easy to drift. So we're going to be conscious of the drift. And again, we have that parking lot for a tool for future annual report metrics and content that we can talk about. So what is achievable for the 2018 annual report content this year from staff's perspective? And we're going to walk through this department by department. I just wanted to frame up the discussion a little bit before I handed it off to Deb, because administration gets to go first.
Ms. Varela, if I may, just before we get into the, into the department by department, is there any questions of the committee for staff or at this point on what she's covered so far? Nope, okay, good. Just wanted to make sure.
No, that's great. Thank you. I should have checked in. So the discussion structure we're proposing is this. The top block on the left is going to be the 2018 annual report new content. And that's where we hope to have discussion. Staff's going to present some ideas, and then we're going to be looking for direction to staff, right? At the end of this, we're going to actually have some clear marching orders for 2018. We're also in the department presentations, we're just going to highlight some staff ideas that we currently have for future annual report content. And we just want you to know we're thinking about what we can pull off in the future, and then we need to get you involved in that conversation. And the third block's really a placeholder to say, let's be cautious, we're not drifting, and we can parking lot if necessary. Was there anything else on that slide, or are we good with that? Good? Okay, so first department up is administration, and Deb Hopkins is going to take this. So again, she's going to walk through all her blocks, and then we're going to come back to this block to see what discussion council wants to have around this.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be presenting the proposed additions to the administration section of the annual report. Some of our ideas for 2018 include reporting on the departmental staffing level, so providing an overview of staffing for the administration department, the number of F O I requests processed, the number of meeting minutes posted on time, so establishing a benchmark for meeting minutes to be scheduled to the next council agenda for adoption and posted online subsequently, the number of parking tickets issued showing parking enforcement activities within, with the aim of year-over-year reduction of tickets, which may inform future parking regulation awareness activities, the number of special events permits issued, that includes things like the annual events such as the Oak Bay Tea Party, the business, the B I A night markets, the cycling and running events, block parties, and more. I just want to make sure that I emphasize that this does not include park permits, the number of job postings indicating the number of competitions conducted, and the number of organizational employee staffing levels, so providing a description of the overall staffing of the district. For 2019 and beyond, the administration department is proposing to report out on the number of contracts, agreements, and leases entered into, the number of licenses of occupation issued, the number of council correspondents received and actioned, the number of bylaws and policies actioned, a snapshot of communication activities, including an evaluation of these activities, and a stronger linkage of accomplishments and initiatives to strategic planning. So what I mean by that is providing more clarity on how the projects and work undertaken supports the strategic priorities established by council, such as the five developed earlier this year as shown on your handouts with the colored charts or the bubble diagram. And we'd also like to be reporting out on the number of injury claims and time loss claims, and an indication of H R turnover rates and vacancy rates, as well as a breakdown of staff training by time and topic. If council has ideas for additional content for future annual reports, please make some notes, and we'll discuss them a little bit later in the meeting. And through Your Worship to Council, is there any information proposed for 2018 that you feel does not need to be included, or that you would like to see added for the administration department?
I'll ask the question to council now, but they may want, we'll come back to this at the end as well to give people a chance to mull it over if it, if they have any brilliant ideas through this thing, but Counselor Nate, did you have a?
Yeah, thank you very much, through your chair, for that overview. That's, I don't have a huge amount to add. I have a couple, well, I have one, but I'd also like to ask. Would you be presenting this and then present it over time, like show a window of time so that you could see the trending? Would that be the intent?
Through you, Chair. We would anticipate being able to do that. We may not be able to do that right off the bat, which we'd be establishing some benchmarks, but we, it would be our intention to show that year-over-year trend.
That's good, because sometimes it's difficult to make sense of what a number means if you can't see the way it's trending. That's great. And I did notice you said that earlier in the presentation, Ms. Varela. So the other thing is, I was just wondering about the metric of council correspondents received and actioned. And the point I was thinking about that's not really, won't be very clear there, is the number of complaints we get and action. And are we assuming that a correspondence is a complaint? Or would that, would there be some way to parcel that out? The reason I'm asking is, I think it's important that it's clear that we respond to specific complaints, and then they are actioned as separate from just, you know, not just, but somebody expressing a point of view that isn't really looking for an action. Because I think that shows that we are, as we've said, as one of our strategic goals, responsive and customer-friendly, et cetera. So I just wonder if you might respond to that.
Through you, Chair. I think that's something that we could explore, and I think that's, we would maybe have to give that some consideration and come back to you.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. Thank you, Deb. And I just wanted to add, could we, could we put something in about our commissions, committees, and boards? And also a reference to where you have, I know this is for future, it was enhanced, sorry, highlights of community engagement, but that is a form of community engagement. So I'm just wondering if we want to include that in the 2018. I think it's important, and also the, you did a customer survey, I believe, in 2018, did? Oh, 2016? Okay, sorry, wrong year. So that was all I was thinking, that maybe to add that. I have a number of notes for future, but I'll wait till later. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. I just, there's, I want to, if I may, just get some clarification, if you don't mind, because there's, there's a list of the committees and commissions in the annual report. So is the intention to add some metrics to that, or is that the question that you're asking for?
I was just thinking of a quick, maybe a reference to how important they are in terms of volunteers and volunteer engagement. Just maybe a sentence or two. I realize there's a list later on, but I, yeah, okay.
No, that sounds, that's a reasonable request, absolutely.
We can, that's something that we would look at entering into the report itself, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Counselor Patterson, then Counselor Zelka.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure if this goes with the administration. Thank you very much for the list. I've been madly checking off all of, all of, trying to keep track of it all, and it seems like it's quite complete. Just the one thing, and this may be something that you, again, need to have more direction from council on, but it's perhaps clarity of a mission statement. We have a vision statement, but clarity of a mission statement to go with the annual report.
I don't know that we have such a thing. Staff can't add that without our blessing, so.
Your Worship, so when we go move to finalizing the corporate strategic plan, so we did take direction that we would take, so we'd take our inspiration for our vision from the community, from the O C P. We'd take our mandate from the charter, that sort of stuff. So we will have council sign off on that document when it's finalized. And then I think that can transfer over, and council may want to revisit those in your next round of strategic planning. So I think what we'll do is we'll put that on the parking lot for future, if that's good. But we don't want to lose that thought, because that's a great one.
Thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. It would be wonderful to add to this very extensive list with respect to F O I. It would be useful to know, at least to start tracking over time, to maybe this year, to at least capture a baseline. The average time from start to finish for an F O I request, and ideally, the average cost. It won't make sense for the first time, but over time, it'll start to make sense with respect to seeing whether it's trending down or trending up, and how that might affect with respect, and what that would, some of the proxy measures that have come out of that. Thank you.
Through you, Chair. Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion, and I think that's something that we'll also add to our parking lot for the future. If we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
And a follow-up, if I may.
Absolutely.
With respect to the tracking, the suggestion from Counselor Nate around tracking the response rates in some ways, or responsiveness. I presume that when we get to the bylaw enforcement officer, which I think is buildings and is planning? Yeah, so I will definitely want to have, to have those numbers sort of highlighted there. But with respect to general correspondence, I'm not quite sure what the details would be. But I know it's very important to, that the bylaw enforcement officer numbers come forward. Thank you.
Ms. Varela?
So Your Worship, that certainly is top of mind for staff. I think the tracking of complaints and response time, there's a wide variety of how organizations respond to that. Some have a 3-1-1 system, there's, you know, there's a large number of ways we can respond. I think that's why we'll parking lot that, to actually identify what would work for our organization and bring back a proposal for future.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Green and then Counselor Patterson.
Thank you. Just a quick suggestion, when I was doing my homework that Deb assigned all of us, and I was looking at one report in particular from Port Alberni. I really like the pronoun "our" rather than "your," and I see that it's your Oak Bay, but we, could we not change that to "our" Oak Bay? I think it sends a different message. Would that be reasonable? I really liked that in the Port Alberni annual report, and I, yeah, so that's a very small change, but I think it has a very different message to people, so we're all in this together, kind of.
And it will save us a lot of ink.
Yeah, it's, it's.
25% reduction in ink. I like this.
Anyway, that was, that was just, that was one thing for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Green. Ms. Varela, did you have anything else to add?
No, that's great. You can just see how the parking lot and what we can do this year is shaking out behind us. So I think once we're done the end of the meeting, we can go back, reflect on that. Everyone can agree, and staff takes away clear direction, and we move forward. So thanks for your patience with this.
Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And this is probably for the parking lot also, but just if we could track, say, O C P engagement events that we have or meetings, and social media audience, a way of tracking that and maybe putting it in citizens' engagement events. I know, you can't, it's pretty difficult to backtrack and get it all for this year, but it's something to keep in mind going forward.
Thank you. Anything else for the administrators? I'll just throw my two cents in here. I agree the suggestion made by Counselor Nate about having the rule, you know, the comparators, you know, having previous year, maybe the five, rolling five-year average, so you can really get a sense of what that number actually means is very helpful. Recognizing that we had this problem at the police board meeting where the N number was so small that it went from three to four. It was a 33% increase, and it looked horrible. So we have to be careful that the numbers are big enough to actually track them effectively. I do have the same sort of question. I think tracking our responsiveness and correspondence is excellent idea, but it'd be nice to know exactly what that means, because obviously, there's a lot of, most of the correspondence coming in is sent to the Oak Bay Council, and the staff respond saying, "Thank you, it's been forwarded," is that, you know, is that the measure, or are we looking at action? So I think just some clarity on that would be very helpful. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, Counselor Green?
I just have a general question. Do you want us to critique for 2018? Just add some comments based on the 2017 report, or do you want us?
Well, let's get through the, each of the, each of the departments. And then if there's anything that was not captured, then we can capture that at the end.
Great, thanks.
Back to you, Ms. Varela.
All right, so building and planning is up next, so actually, it's over to Bruce.
Thank you. And thank you, Council, for highlighting a few of the items that I had proposed. So we're already moving ahead, as you will see as I present. So for the 2018, we're talking about documenting our department staffing levels as well, our admin, our planning, our building officials, and bylaw. But the new item that I believe I heard just a minute ago was the idea of having some statistics around bylaw enforcement. And so for 2018, we think we can bring you information around the number of complaints, the number of times or sites that we have to visit regarding those complaints, and also the tickets issued around bylaw infractions. So that we can certainly put together for the 2018 annual report. With respect to the future, and it was also raised just a minute ago by council, the idea that we might document and highlight our community engagement activities. And that, I think, is organization-wide, but I know from the building and planning group, we have, you know, planning projects and open houses and surveys, and we intend to, and hope to bring that forward for 2019 and future. And again, I think that'll, we'll probably look at that as an organization as opposed to just the building and planning department. And so I think we also, you know, we have our received application. and planning department. And, and so I think we also, you know, we have our received application by type information, and our 2017 annual report will continue to, to do that. But we, we think that perhaps going into the 2019 and, and future, that we might look at sort of enhancing that a little bit. And, and one of them is to, to look at that year-over-year comparison. We also think that there might be some value in, in not only the applications received, but also documenting the active applications that we might have from prior year or years. In, in my experience, you might have a few hanging around from two years ago, and, and do that status. But the other new item that we thought we might want to look at is, is maybe bringing forward some information on, on our processing times, and maybe our average processing times. And, and I think that'll help everybody to have a, a sense of, and we'll have to think, work on an average basis, because there are definitely fast and slow, and it's really what's genuinely happening that we want, I think, track and, and see if we can work on that. So with that, I, I'll just make one comment, that we may have to get a bigger parking lot. No, sorry. With, with that, your worship.
That's Engineering's Department, I believe, is the parking lots.
So I would, would maybe direct council to the, to the proposed 2018 new content. And if there are any comments or additions that council might have around that, we'd be glad to hear that.
Yeah. Counselor Green?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Anderson. I was hoping maybe for some planning information that includes a summary of, and you've got the number of applic, you mentioned applications processed in 2018. I was thinking also about the number of demolition applications processed and outcomes. So were they a new build, were they barged? And also the number processed of heritage revitalization agreements, registrations, or designations. I think the community would appreciate that information, particularly related to heritage and conservation. Is that, would that be hard to do?
No, that's, we, we had planned on the heritage, but actually, I was just sort of glancing and noticing that we, we didn't list the demolition permits, unless that's falling under building, and I'm just not seeing it. So we would be able to provide that.
Oh, thank you very much.
That's a good thing, because Bonnie was already writing it on the 2018 content, so.
It's nice to be able to check boxes that we've already done it. That's good. Counselor Patterson?
Yes. Again, probably for the parking lot, but just any updates, and I'm not sure if it's from building and planning or engineering, but updates on any build, building permit fee changes or calculations as they come along, because sometimes we tend to lose those. And so it'd be nice to have some type of, just a checklist for it.
We have an aggregate number, I think, we currently track. Is that correct, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, on the revenue side. I think what you're referring to is perhaps if we make a change to our fees. And I would comment that we, we do that through council by bylaw. And I, I think the, the action of that will be noted, I'm hoping, by administration in terms of the bylaws. But certainly, the specifics, we can, we can look at that when that, when that occurs. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything else from, Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I know that community amenities and development cost charges are sort of high in some people's, you know, awareness. And I, I also note that the municipal, municipal affairs, whatever they're referred to now, I forget where they're, whoever, whoever's responsible for us at the provincial level, ask that all local governments provide DCC figures and cash contribution, cash contribution in lieu of parkland figures, and those sorts of numbers. I do note that Oak Bay's numbers tend to be in the zero range, but I imagine they're going to start to trend up. So I think it might be useful for us to start looking at those numbers. Or if they are, if they stay at zero, then since we report them at the provincial level, we, we might want to possibly start reporting them in our annual report. Thank you.
It would certainly be a next year, because there's not much point in reporting on CACs and DCCs in 2018.
I, I will note that, yeah, yeah, I think it is a, a future piece. But I will note that when we do take cash in lieu of parkland, we do have that information. So that's something we can report out on. Of course, we don't have development cost charges. So if and when we do, then certainly we can report that.
Thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, through you to staff. I was, this is going to be a bit of a difficult one to capture, so I understood this would be a parking lot type of item. But I'm just, I'm conscious of the fact that building and planning staff are going to be working, you know, quite assiduously over the years to come on a bunch of bylaw updates and a bunch of, of work in that milieu. And it's, it's a very hard thing to put a metric around. But I think that it would reflect really well on, and, and help to capture the hard work that building and planning is going to be doing over the next couple of years, to be able to somehow put some kind of tracking around the, you know, the hours or the, or the work that's being put into those bylaw revisions that, that we've included in our strategic plan. So however that gets captured, I think it would be nice for the public to just be aware that there's a lot of person hours going into doing that.
Thank you. And I, I would tend to agree. I think that's one of those ones that's hard to metric. But, I mean, there's, the layout we've used has had some numbers and some just text reporting on activities. And I, I think just making a note of that, that we can make, at least capture what, what is being done, and what has been changed over the last year is probably worth noting in, in verbal form, at least, if not in metrics. The, the numbers probably don't matter as much as the actuals, right?
Could I just ask for some suggested wording for Donna, Bruce?
So I, I think, you know, for me, when we are embarking on bylaw updates, I, I see them as projects. And, and so, like any project as a manager, I, I do want to know how much work we're going to have to do, and how much, on the course of a, a day's time, is, is staff allocated to that. So, you know, I, I don't think we, we track it necessarily like some of the other measurements that we have. But, but certainly, from a management perspective, if I've got three different bylaw updates, you know, I, I do want to put that into the context of the other projects and the operational work that we're doing. So I, I do kind of distinguish it a little bit more than, than operational activity, even though it is part of our, our sort of, our, our regular function is to make sure those bylaws are updated. So, just bylaw updates, I think, is probably good enough.
You got bylaws, staff time.
Anything, thank you. Anything else from committee at this point? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. I don't think I have anything to add. I think the, that notion of the time to a permit, sort of thing of the responsiveness is, is sort of, those are the sort of things that we hear other jurisdictions bragging about. And I think they might be hard to measure, given the, there are some that take a very, very long time. Some, I'd be curious to know, to take away, not for this one, are there some best practices for maybe like the 85th percentile, where you throw out the bottom 5% and the top 5% to take the average? So if there's one project that's taking three years, it doesn't throw off the, the average, but it gives us some, some meaningful metrics on those kind of turnaround times?
Your worship, I, I've certainly done this in my previous, so it's, it is something that we can, we have a little bit of a strategy for, so.
Appreciate that. All right. We'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Rela.
So now we'll hand this over to Debbie for financial services. And this is actually a news section in the annual report this year as well, because Debbie's department has been included under administration before us. We're actually going to break it out and showcase it individually. So I think just that's a great step forward.
Thank you very much. Yes, so the information that is typically included in the annual report is the required financial statements and things like that. So we're actually proposing to put in quite a bit more information this year. That's why the, the list is quite large. We do track a number of statistics in the department and metrics. And so, similar to Central Sanage, we were hoping to provide some comparative data over a four- or five-year period. So what that data would look like is, again, similar to the other departments, is the employees for the department, number of employees. The cash receeding and banking would include things like number of EDIs and ECOMs, number of cash, check, and POS transactions, the utility pre-authorized withdrawal numbers, property tax pre-authorized withdrawal numbers. For licenses, the number of payments processed, we would provide dog licenses, including replacement tags, business licenses. For payroll, we would provide the numbers of T4s issued each year. And property tax notices, we could provide the, the dollar value of the tax levies, as well as the number of tax notices issued, and homeowner grants processed, and the number of deferment applications processed, which, as you know, has gone up significantly year-over-year. Utility bills issued, we could provide those numbers, and also the number of accounts payable invoices processed. And we could also provide the number of RFPs and tenders that have been issued throughout the year. We would propose to include, similar to what Courtney does, a table of important tax dates for 2019, which provides the due dates, date of penalty, date of tax sale, things like that. And then a service plan year-over-year comparison. And that one is largely legislatively driven. So that would include things like tax notices mailed by the third week in May. Have we achieved that goal? The five-year financial plan, did we meet the legislative timelines? Audited financial statements, did we meet legislated timelines? Sewer and water rates bylaws, did we have them adopted before January 1st for the next year? Employees charitable fund tax return, did we file that on time? And municipal and regional district tax return, did we file that on time? So those sorts of, of metrics. So for the future ones, what we're suggesting is we could provide additional taxation and assessment information. That would include things like property assessments, per average residence or in total, year-over-year, property tax revenue year-over-year. And we would also propose to include debt servicing limits year-over-year, if that is, is useful information, and the number of IT service calls. So for example, the help desk, because we really haven't reported much on, on that part, which is a part of the finance department. And again, any other council ideas for the parking lot. And having said that, if we go back to the blue box again, we would like any comments that you might have on this section.
Counselor Green?
Thank you, your worship, through, through you to Ms. Carter. Thank you very much. And one of the things, I was just wondering, not to refer to the Port Alberni report all the time, this is your fault, Deb. They have a little section where it says, "Where your taxes go?" And in the tax statement every year, and I find it helpful as a residents, there is a pie chart that breaks down where taxes go in each of the areas that the, that the municipality is responsible for. So I just wondered if we could include a pie chart in our tax information. That might be helpful as a visual. I personally like the use of visuals wherever possible. And sometimes it saves ink, because you don't have to write a long explanation. Anyway, that's just my, my idea for 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. I, Ms. Carter, is there, I don't think there's any issue with doing that.
Thank you. No, your worship, there's not. We already include it for the mayor's letter that goes out with taxes. So we could certainly include that with the annual report as well.
Thank you. Is that it, Ms. Counselor Green? Okay. Yes. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. I, IT seems to fit underneath finance, I presume. On the next page, you did mention something about to do with IT. Will the various other IT metrics be reported out in this section, or will they tend to be elsewhere, such as social media, or the website hits, or those sort of general publicly facing things? I'm not quite sure where they would fit.
Your worship, through you.
Yes, Ms. Hopkins?
That's, that would fall under the communications piece that we would plan to be providing you a snapshot with going forward.
Oh, great. With respect to things like engagement, I don't know whether the, the total amount of, of video that was captured, and maybe average number of people that were actually webcasting in to view our, our meetings, I'd like to know if there's anybody out there. And I don't know whether it would be capturing that in, in the general section, or whether it would be appropriate in this section, to be decided, I guess, by staff. Thank you.
Through you, through your chair. That is something that we can, we can look at. I just caution, I went through this process in a previous municipality, and one of the things that skews those is that you'll, your numbers bump up when people are viewing afterwards, when staff view it. And so those numbers don't stay static, so you'd have to capture it in the moment. But it's something that we can explore.
Thank you. I think if there was some way of capturing aggregate total number of views over the year, would probably be sufficient, without having to get into too much granularity, and that would be sort of a moment in time that would be equivalent. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just building on Counselor Green's comment about the pie charts in the Port Alberni one, I thought there was also an interesting chart in the Port Alberni report. Your tax dollars at work. So basically, it, it shows for every dollar how it breaks down in cents by department. I thought that was a, a very easy visual to understand and communicate with.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Appleton? Now, it's not, just, you're putting out citizen budget info, but it's not really, that's just, you use a similar pie chart in the citizen budget, but it's, we're not looking for the citizen budget info. We're looking for the breakdown, similar to that. Okay. You know, just going back later, want to make sure we have, can we capture the rate piece? Okay. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I, I note that in one of the other reports that, that we were asked to review, it included essentially an explanatory note or some explanatory materials before the appendix, where the financial statements are. And it, it reminded me very much of the material that, that staff put together for our, for our financial plan, especially the content that's on pages 14 to 20, and also 25, 27. So I, I think that potentially staff have already addressed sort of putting that type of information out there. I guess I'm just looking for maybe some input from staff as to how that information might be. Are, are we looking to potentially copy some of that information over to the annual report as well? Or would we make reference in the annual report to the financial plan content? Because I, I think the content is there. I just wonder how we might capture some of that really good explanatory material that's in the financial plan into the annual report.
I guess the bigger question is, is there, is there equivalent descriptors in the 2018 financial plan? Because this is a 2018 financial report. So we have to be a bit careful about how we're, but the wording might still carry over if that's.
So if we could just take a look at that, we'll put it on this year's to see if it's doable. So we'll review the relative, or the relevant, sorry, financial plan to see if those kinds of explanatory notes were included. And if they were, we'll make use of those.
Thank you. And through your chair. And I would be referring to, and that's, yeah, that's going in the right direction. I, I think I'm, I'm talking about sort of some of the content that was included in the financial plan, that just sort of talked about the broad strokes of, of how finances were managed at the municipal level, not necessarily specific to the year overall, but explaining essentially to a layperson how municipal finance is conducted and how the numbers are arrived at. So I think it wouldn't necessarily be specific to one given year, but would be useful to help understand what's in the financial statements.
Could you give us those page numbers again, Counselor Appleton?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is in the, the draft financial plan that's been provided to council, particularly pages 14 to 20, and also pages 25 to 27. And there are some middle pages in there. The, the, the pages that I left out in the middle are the ones that talk specifically about Oak Bay's reserve funds. So those are more specific to individual purpose. But I note that staff have, have provided a lot of content in those pages in the draft financial report. They just kind of talk about the, the broad strokes of, of how we address, you know, how, how, how the finances are addressed at the municipal level and, and are essentially put into some accessible language.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Carter? All right. I don't see any. I'm, I'm going to have a, have a couple here to go through on my end. One is, and I don't, this is probably a future piece, but you know what, the, when we're reviewing the 2019 budget, we have the 2018 budget, and then 2018 actuals in that budget format. And I wonder if there's any way, because the, the, the budget is a planning document, and of course, the financial statement is a point-in-time capture of where we're at. It would be nice to find some way, not in this, in this year, but to find, to look at some tools, maybe that that we can actually sort of do a budget-to-actuals comparison, to make it a little clearer as to what happened in the year. Because it's not always that, they just don't line up, just, you know, by their very nature, they're very different financial reporting models, and it would be nice to find some way of making it a bit more clear about how we did against the budget in that piece. In 2017, I thought there was a really good work at putting the work plan sort of pieces in there, and I think just building on that, and maybe at some point, even putting in percentages, the completion, and those sorts of things, and it would be nice to have, definitely work, definitely a parking lot type thing for consideration. It would be nice, it was touched on here, by Councilor Appleton, we skipped over the reserve funds. It would be very nice, I think, I think they're a source of constant confusion for people, but we have all this money, but we don't know what it's for. You know, tracking those funds across time, you know, noting that, how much is in there, what's the change, what have they been used for, what have they actually funded in terms of some of those projects? So people get a sense that they're actually dynamic pieces, and not just sitting there static, that there's money coming in and out, buying fire equipment, funding this project or that, that might be a good way of reporting. I also thought, it would be nice to include, even though it's not us, changes that impact our residents still, things like water rates, sewer rates, CRD, taxation rates, the things, just again, over time, so people can kind of see, those are all things that affect their bottom line, if they could, maybe we could capture some of those, those financial data over time as well, to see, to get a sense. Those are my other possibilities. Nothing that has to be in this one, but things that could be in the future. Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, Worship, and through you. Just very briefly, I wanted to raise the subject of potentially capturing grant amounts, grants that we pursue as a municipality. And I know that that's a, obviously, a revenue line, and we include it in our financial statements, it's there if you sort of know how to dig for it, know how to look for it. But I think that applying for and receiving grants is really value-added for the municipality, and I think staff, you know, work really hard at getting the grants that we do get. I think we've gotten some, you know, some good news just over the past week, so I think that that might be a good metric to potentially capture for members of the public.
I'm gonna expand on that a little bit, because there's a metric, but the metric can be, we had a huge grant for the water piece, that 1.8 million, so the next year's gonna look incredibly tiny by comparison, it's gonna look, so there's the metrics, but there's also just, you know, if we list all the grants that are provided, it would maybe, in one spot, might be quite an impressive thing to kind of show, and again, if there's those changes over time, that's another option. Councilor Patterson?
Yes, thank you. And this was going to build on what your comment was, because sometimes the grants can, you know, I guess I question, it's nice to show highlights of grants in the annual report, but I guess we may be overlapping a bit here, because we do have also the budget process. And, you know, so some of, how much can you put in an annual report, and how much do you cover in your budget process itself, when you're talking, you know, when you're talking to the community? So I think maybe we have to, we'll have to leave it to staff's discretion as to how to best handle these. But I like the idea of just putting grants in highlights, perhaps, of an annual report, rather than trying to do the year-over-year, which might skew it. And one other thing I, of course, would like to have, in some part of the process, is the Arts Alive program and the tracking of the art collection, and any costs for installation, maintenance, and those types of things year-over-year.
And that would come out of Parks and Rec, so we'll see what lies in state for that. Anything else for Financial Services? All right. Oh, Councilor Green?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I missed it, but did we mention the grants that we actually award also, and where they go? I think that's good information for the community to know what, is that okay?
That's actually captured in an upcoming section?
Oh, upcoming, sorry.
No, that's great.
That was very effective foreshadowing, we'd make excellent novelists.
For telling, thank you.
Ms. Rela, on to the next.
Okay, so Police Services, and Andy's joined us tonight, so we'll hand this over to him.
Okay, so, in the real small writing at the top, it's just a bit of an explanation about how the police board works and the mechanism of governance of the police department within a municipality. So we have a rolling, or a five-year strategic plan. Actually, this will be the, we're currently in, I believe, the third five-year plan that Oak Bay Police Department has historically had. So we're in number, year number two. So if you look at 2017's annual report, our sort of input was pretty limited, it sort of showed some raw stats, not a lot of analysis around it. So what we're proposing for 2018 is that we actually speak to the statistics that are relevant to the three priorities that the community assisted us in determining for the year. So, just for your information, we do report quarterly on our strategic plan to the police board, and that quarterly report is put on our website, so the public certainly can access that, sort of as the year goes on. So this would be a year-end snapshot, and it would be, we speak about stats, but we'd also sort of highlight some of the initiatives that we undertook. Not all of them, it would, it's pretty extensive, but the ones that we think, you know, there would be real community interest in. And each year, we go back and assess our three priorities and how we're doing, and if there's trends that change, like let's say, one year, youth seemed to be a big issue, and so we're heavy on youth initiatives, the following year, we may determine that crimes against seniors, or a certain type of crime increases, so we'll adjust our initiatives accordingly. So that's why it's important to, at the end of the year, to speak to what they are. But again, like I said, the public can access that anytime during the year to determine what they are. So, yeah, so that's for, yeah, so we also are gonna be inserting a bit of a document into the strat plan, or into the annual plan that highlights it. So for 2020, as I indicated, we're, in 2020, mid-year, we'll be halfway through our five-year plan, so our intention is to do a community survey, and perhaps some other measure, means to measure the community response and satisfaction to what we've done, sort of thus far. So what we will do in 2020, in addition to the 18 reporting out, is we'll also add the outcomes of that survey, and that work with the community input on client satisfaction, essentially.
Thank you, Chief Printon. I just point out, there's a, in the piece of paper he held up, there was the, if you go to the agenda notes, the May 16th council handout, that's one of the add-on pieces, you can have a quick look at that, is a more detailed breakout of pieces that are in there. Are there questions? Did you ask, Councilor Green? I'll just go to you first every time, it's easier.
Sorry, I'm so chatty. Through you, too, the chief, do you also, in the annual report, highlight your police board members and your meeting? Do we know who the police board members are, or would the community know through an annual report? Or is that something you feel is...
That's something we have highlighted on our website, and there's a specific section that talks to who the board's members are, and that sort of thing.
It is in the, it is in the current annual report, under Boards and Committees.
Okay.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you.
Was there anybody else with questions? Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, Chair, through you. And I'm going to assume very clearly that this is included in community engagement, but I'm going to assume that OPAPD's, you know, online presence and social media presence is sort of the envy of services around the region, so I would hope, and gather that they would, that the statistics and some of the, and sort of taking some credit for that would work its way into the annual report, because I know that our recognition and the visibility of the police departments significantly increased by that, so I would, I would hope that that gets specific mention.
Sure, I think, you know, what we could perhaps do is highlight a couple of bigger wins, if you want to call it that, and that could be an area that we could certainly highlight.
Councilor Nay?
Thank you, through you, Chair. One of, this comes out for me in this section, but in a number of other sections, so my comments are not just specific to the police section. But when I look at the previous report from 2017, in addition to all the statistics and stuff that have been presented here, what's missing for me is, is the relationship the police have with our community members. It doesn't come out because we're presenting statistics, but it takes me to the visuals that are presented in the report. So if I may just say that here, but it does apply to the other departments, and what I'm looking for myself in the photos, there's an awful lot of pictures of trucks, and cars, and things like that. And I understand why we do that, but I really would like to see more people in our annual report, so that we get that connection, that this is about a community of people, where we have services, and that connection doesn't come through visually. And I know our CAO is big on visuals, and, you know, I know you didn't have a hand in the previous ones, but I just think we could do a better job. I saw some really nice pieces of work in the other examples that you gave to us, where it just, the people in the community just shine through in connection with the different departments, particularly Parks and Rec, with their art, with the police, with the fire. So that's just a comment, I guess, more generally, that came out in this specific piece.
Yeah, I'll hand that to the staff in general, not to the police department. Ms. Hopkins?
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the suggestion, that's something that we have considered. One of the obstacles that we face in doing that is having to get permission, and tracking down people, and having them sign off that we can use their image in a publication that's also online. So it is something that we could explore, we may not be able to get that done for 2018, but it's certainly something we can explore.
Thank you, Councilor Green.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you, to either the chief, or to Ms. Hopkins. That, I think that was one of the points I wanted to make, and didn't, I'm sorry, that a picture, a picture in the annual report of the police board members would also be helpful. I agree with Councilor Nay that photos are really helpful, and it's nice to know who in the community is doing certain services for the community, so board members, for instance, police board members. The other thing is, I noticed in a number of the other samples, that the heads of departments, each of them is photographed, or also has a message section, and I'm not thinking for 2018, it's probably too late, but for 2019, I think it would be nice to have a picture or a photograph of the department, and then maybe a statement, just a very brief statement from the director, or the chief, and our chiefs, in this case, chief of fire and chief of police. Because I think it's really important, and I like the idea of a photo of everyone standing together. It may not be possible because of shift work with your departments, but at least each of the chiefs could be featured. Thank you.
Thank you. See no others on the police, we'll go to the other emergency services.
Okay, so, and this is over to Darren.
Good evening, Your Worship, and councilors. For the Fire Services and Emergency Program for 2018 new content, we're looking at adding some visual information on incidents, type and priority. I noticed in the past, we've had a very logical sequential order of number of calls, et cetera, and it can be very difficult for the average person to wade through that and see what we're actually doing, and we have a visual in a minute that I'll show you to represent that. Looking at average response times, so starting to place some metrics in there, that within the fire service are key performance indicators, and we've just have typically reported in how many calls we go to, and, you know, how many beach fires there have been, and those types of things, as opposed to, for instance, average response times, which gives you a good snapshot of how quickly we get to people's residences during their time of need. And also, I think it holds us accountable as well for those numbers and those metrics against our industry standards. Training hours of members, we spend significant time in the fire service training, it's a huge part of what we do, is training for those extreme events, and I think capturing that and placing that in the annual report would add some real value. In the emergency program, we have just some tremendous volunteers there, and they all are reaching their five, 10, 20, 25-year milestones, and I think reflecting that in the annual report, to show how many years of service these volunteers are putting in, and so you can see when, where these people have achieved those landmarks would be great. The number of volunteers that are recruited, and those that are retiring, for instance, for this year, we'd have 10 recruited and eight retiring, and when I say retiring, many times, it's people that move out of the catchment area, so they're just no longer available to us. As well, and I've heard this from council already, that's the advantage of going forth, the dollar amount of grants applied for and received, because the emergency program is a relatively small budget in the municipal scheme of things, and the number of dollars we receive in grants is significant to that budget number. Moving forward into the future, breaking down our, again, our response times into turnout time, so that's time in, from the time the call's dispatched to wheels rolling, and then response time, excuse me, full response time, wheels rolling to wheel stopping. And again, we have NFPA standards that we work to, as well as our dispatch contractor, Sannich, that they provide the part before we get the call, so they're working to NFPA, and as do we. Under the emergency program going forward, again, training for our volunteers in both our emergency support services, and in our communications group as well, and though we have never reflected the time that these people put in, but that training that makes them an effective resource for the municipality. I'll have just, we'll flip to the next slide, and I'll just show you just a quick visual. And as we look at incidents by type, rather than looking at a list of calls, we can, people can quickly see, there's a significant number, for instance, of medical aid calls, and you can instantly see, well, that's a big part of what we do, and that just jumps out at you right away. So we'll flip back to the last slide, and anxious to hear any comments or suggestions.
Councilor Nay?
Just a very picky comment about that visual, but the blues are, there's three different blues, it's kind of tricky to see the different, that's really, that, here's my more significant point, though. That can be dealt with at the publishing, but...
Should leave the blues to the police, and stick with the reds, Darren, I think that's his message.
This also may be relevant for the police, I'm not, it may be more for the police, if I may say this, but I know, because a lot of the work that police and fire do in this community is community work, and our community is very connected to your department and your staff, and have a, you know, there's a relationship there with our community, and in that vein, I'm thinking about the block watch program, and how both protective services are quite connected in building that, and I'm wondering if that's something that could be tracked, or so that we can see how it's trending in terms of the number of active block watches in our community?
Chief Printon?
Sure, so you're gonna see, and one of the new additional areas that the CAO mentioned earlier, and what we found as we were working through it, that police and fire fell very heavy into the social sustainability aspect of it, so some of those areas you're talking about, you're gonna see where it will be highlighted in that area, specific to what our involvement is in that.
Thank you. Councilor Green?
Thank you, through you, to the chiefs. Would that include your charitable work? Because I know you do a lot of work with charity groups, and in fact, you were just telling me tonight about your work with Kiwanis, so I think that should be reflected. I don't think a lot of community members realize how much fire and police do in those areas. Thank you.
Through you, Chair, I would take some direction from our, from our CAO, when we do, some items are through, charitable work is through the department itself, and I do have some examples coming up later. And then there's our union's charitable foundation, and then, of course, there's service work that individual people do at the departments. So there are three different types, and I'll leave it, I'll just turn it over... So there are three different types and I'll leave it, I'll just turn it over to Lou to speak to what would be appropriate for the annual report.
So right now currently, we've put it under economic sustainability, their participa- participation, wow, that was hard to say, sorry, in charitable events. What I think is interesting is it really shakes out across each of those categories of sustainability, but we've certainly captured it in there. So how we play it out, we'll see in the layout.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much Chair. Fire and Emergency Program is near and dear to, to my heart. So it's really great to, to see the continuing good works being done in this area. I think, I, I think it would be beneficial to know not only the number of volunteers, but also the number of hours that they volunteer in the, whether it's in the lens of social sustainability or some other. I was also rather shocked and pleased that at the, outside of Oak Bay, that the Oak Bay volunteers have such a large impact. I was, especially with the, the recent state of emergencies, a number of Oak Bay volunteers in the emergency program did a fair bit of work outside of the district, above and beyond the call of duty. And it would be great if some of those numbers with respect to at least total aspects and social sustainability could be captured and, and celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Your Worship, could I just clarify? So that would be a future, that would be a parking lot, the number of volunteer hours for emergency program Darren?
Yes, I, future, future years, we could easily capture, capture that, that data.
That's interesting. These are almost divided into the statistics that help guide our decision-making and just and, and things that are just there to measure some, like you say, the, the, the community health and things. So this is sort of interesting, these, these sources that are, are certainly of interest to the community. Counselor Zelka?
I, I thank you, I've just was tweaked with my memory with the suggestion. I understand many of the volunteers and, and no doubt protective services, fire services do a number of courses through J I B C, the various education programs. No doubt statistics could easily be obtained from them since they, they provide essentially the standard of, of, of emergency program services, of training to a logic extent.
Through you Chair, we could step down into that, into the granularity of that, but our overall training hours, that is a component of those, those hours overall throughout the year.
Thank you. Okay, move on. Parks, Rec and Culture.
All right, Your Worship, we'll hand that over to Ray.
Thank you. Excuse me. So in addition to the drop in attendance statistics that we've typically included in the last few years, certainly one of the things we're looking at in the recreation section, I'll get back to the culture, but on the recreation side is augmenting that with the number of programs offered across the department, but also the attendance at those programs. I thought that would be a, a good comparator with the drop in statistics. Number of ice cleans, just thought that would be of interest to a lot of folks. And as part of adding those statistics, we would look at how that information is presented in a, in an improved way. If you go back to culture, Counselor Patterson, this is, I think, part, at least partially answers a question you had earlier. The, we could include an arts inventory with a name, artist, installation date, location. We can also track the maintenance time that goes into, there's sort of two parts to the labor component. One is the installation and removal of art pieces and the other is maintenance. Given that most of those pieces are relatively new, there hasn't been a lot of maintenance to date, but certainly as they grow older, that will start to happen and there is money set aside to deal with that. And the, the labor that goes into that is, is multi-departmental. It's both our department and the engineering department or public works participate in those activities. And if you go to parks, a lot of the parks bullets on, on this slide are related to tree issues. So those are statistics that we have been compiling actually for a number of years leading into and certainly in the implementation of the urban forest management plan. So tree-related calls, tree permit requests, trees planted, trees removed, those types of things. So those could, we have those at the ready and they can easily be added. Next slide.
Mr. Herman, just if I may ask, on those numbers, do we have easily, also easily accessible 2017 numbers, just so there's at least one year of comparators for them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then this next, the first half of the next slide is really volunteer number driven. You've got Friends of Uplands Park work, which I think everybody is well aware of, but there's some good numbers there in terms of the number of events. We've got the number of hours related to invasive species removal at a number of locations. And so again, we've been tracking that for at least a couple of years. We can do the same in terms of providing a couple of years worth of data there. The last set of bullets are more of a kind of static numbers, highlights, if you will. Those numbers wouldn't dramatically change year to year, the number of kilometers of hedging that's maintained, boulevard trees, number of playgrounds, benches, things like that. So again, we have that information available and it's easily added to what has been done in the past. And then some ideas for future. Here we've got the time and effort for, related to the maintenance of the arts inventory as we expect that to ramp up over time over the next few years. The number of rentals, a lot of our, the, the folks that come in the doors are usually coming in for drop in, for registered programs or as part of rental groups. And it's the rental groups that's a little more challenging to put those numbers together. That's why we haven't really tracked that up until now, but we certainly could try to come up with a way to, to at least provide an educated guess on those numbers in future. Some analysis of, for instance, municipal garden maintenance, labor and cost of flowers, things like that. And then another multi-departmental effort, the labor and hours spent on Christmas lights, that's also a joint effort with the public works. So as with, with the others, go back to the first slides and happy to either answer any questions or hear of any, anything you'd like to add or delete.
Counselor Nathan, Counselor Green?
Chair, I may have missed it. Where's the culture part in there? Sorry, are, are, what kind of metrics are you tracking for culture, public arts work stuff?
So what we've got there on that slide is just to start with an inventory of the permanent pieces and, you know, the artists, the date that they were installed and things like that.
There's other things they do in culture besides artworks, right? So events and yeah, yeah.
Correct. I mean, there's, you know, I mean, there are some more ideas that we could have for the future. For instance, a number of free events to the public and the attendance at those. That, a lot of those are cultural related events, you know, the concerts in the park and things like that. So as, as far down as we want to drill down, we can start to look at those things.
It does start getting kind of picky. I, I just would want that the report reflect that there is a vibrant, you know, culture component, that, that's what I was thinking. The other thing is I really like, Mr. Herman, how you've included the, the, the metrics to reflect the urban forest strategy and the trees and the number of protected trees, for example, that are removed and then what gets replaced. And then the number over 60 centimeters that have been removed and then what gets replaced. So it looks like our supply is increasing or not even just leveling, at, at least with these metrics that you've provided. The, the only thing is that if I was reading this and I was trying to understand how is the municipality sustaining our, our, our urban canopy? The one metric that I, I, if I was just looking at this, I would say parks, 169 protected trees were removed from private lands. And then I would be looking for the number of overall trees that would ensure that, because that the number isn't depleting, that it is, I don't know if there's a way to represent that.
Through the chair, that's the tough one. And that's actually where the, the problem lies is on private land. And it's difficult for us to come up with a number of how many trees are planted on private land to offset what's lost. So that's the challenge unless we were able to implement some sort of self-reporting for residents to, to do that. But then you're dependent on how diligent people follow through with that. We haven't, we've, we've noted that issue, but we haven't come up with a way to solve it yet.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you and through you. And thanks, Mr. Herman. Just a question, and this may touch other departments as well. I'm thinking specifically about public works and engineering, but is there a place to reflect climate change? And this may be for the future, some of the work around climate change and energy savings. I, I know you, there have been some projects through recreation that, that have had an impact on energy savings and G H Gs. So I'm just wondering if, if we should be looking at climate change as another category for, for both parks, recreation and culture and for, for public work, engineering and public works. Thank you.
Mr. Herman?
Through the chair, that is coming up in a, a little bit later in the presentation and, and it's looked at more municipality wide.
Thank you.
Any other? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you Chair. I appreciate the comments about climate change, it being dealt with holistically and I, I'm definitely looking forward to that. But with respect to the, the specific tree protection pilot, I know it hasn't actually been presented in 2018. Hopefully it'll be, it'll be in the 2019 annual report. So I'm, I'm imagining we're, we'll continue with sort of just a list of, of trees that have sort of been, been removed and added for this year going forward. But it would be great if there was some way that we could grab, grab something relating to the strategic priority around demonstrating leadership and fostering community health and resilience with respect to Parks, Rec and Culture. And I'm not quite sure what that one would be yet. I'm still sort of scratching my head on that, but maybe it'll come out in the, in the, in the climate change section. Thank you.
Anything else? My only two observations might be, I think the rental, like just, just from a dollar amount, would you crack that? From a budget perspective, it might be useful to know year over year. Again, that would just be of interest to know if we're trending up or trending down, if there's any reasons for any of those and probably be of interest to the, to the municipality. And the other one is, is a suggestion we might get to is, is tree coverage as a model. I know it doesn't get done every year, but there is some, some statistical work on tree coverage being done regionally and maybe we can use that as a trend over time, compare it maybe every five years or something like that, show that trend line. All right, that's, I, I'm just looking at the time here. I'm trying to capture all this by say quarter to nine. So if we're about a little less, about 20 minutes left to go through the next sort of four sections, so we'll try and do them expediently. I think there's one more, isn't there, engineering? I think you skipped past.
I have to apologize. Last time I forgot to introduce him. Now I'm just going to skip his section altogether. So over to Dan.
Yes, thank you everyone. So in addition to what's, we normally report in the, in the annual reports, there's some additions here around how are we doing and are we improving, have we met our targets related to, to capital projects and planning for capital projects? So we've been working hard in the last few years to improve that and there's some room, some good room to get better going forward with a, a more solid plan around infrastructure planning last year, this year, and in the five-year plan, we're able to provide a little bit more information about how we've performed in terms of this area. So that's in terms of the 2018. And we're able to also provide in this annual report, a snapshot of the kinds of tracking in this area that we'd like to do going forward. So what does it look like in the coming years around this area? Next is in partnership with the C R D, we have excellent water quality here and we have a robust regime to keep it that way. So we can provide more information about that program so residents get a better understanding of what we do to keep such great water flowing out of Oak Bay's taps. And finally, we do a lot of work around traffic speed and volume counts. And this is in response to customer resident complaints. It's in response to our safety concerns and other operational planning. So we do quite a lot of this work constantly actually, and then it, it results in analysis and, and changes in terms of transportation safety improvement. So we can report out on that as well. As for the future, those two, the first bullet there is what we're really trying to do in engineering services is, is increase how good we're doing around maintenance management metrics. So there are some benchmarks, some pretty standard ones around how much maintenance you're supposed to do per, per year. For example, how many fire hydrants are you supposed to maintain in terms of preventative maintenance each year? How many valves are you supposed to exercise? How much sewer cleaning are you supposed to do? And, and there's a range. So we're working in the future to, to use these metrics to measure our performance and report out on them. And that helps us do that next bullet, which is really capture with the amount of forces we have and the budgets we have and our operational targets, how well are we doing in terms of managing the various demands, including support to other activities that are not maintenance specific? So that's that last bullet. And then I'm all on one slide, so we'll just ask if there's any questions about the first chunk there.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much Chair. Engineering and Public Works get to do a lot of, a lot of good works, but sometimes they get to do a lot of some, some, some of the not so, well, always good, but sometimes a bit dirty. And I don't think it's, it's something that we should necessarily hide. It might be helpful to see the trending of the number of dead deer that have been captured. And I don't know whether the, whether the council's interested or not, but I would love to see that number reducing down over the years. It's always helpful to know, it's one of those things that just happens. We, not only deer, but also other wild animals. It'd be, it's a fact of life. And if all goes well with our.
I just don't want the, the pictures that were described really.
By all means, I'm not interested in pictures, but I am interested in statistics and especially ideally trending down statistics. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Green and then Counselor Patterson?
I'm sorry I put my hand over my mouth and made a noise. It's just that I, it is such a, it, it has been such a difficult issue in this community and very divisive and controversial. And I'm just wondering if that wouldn't be just raising a red flag that we don't need to raise? I mean, I, I would defer to, to our chiefs and to our director of public works and engineering. Is that something that, that, that would, would have meaning for the community? I, I'm just not certain. And I think given that we're in a program now and we're trying to manage it carefully and, and so on, I'm just wondering if, if that's the kind of statistical reporting we need to be doing, but it's a question, not a statement. And I appreciate that we want statistics. Yeah, thank you.
I think we can maybe put it onto the board. I'm not sure if it's actually a 2018 or, because we have, we have yearly, we have statistics already for past years that might show that. It'd be, it would be nice, I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to be measured in success on whether those numbers do go down. And so if we start now to sort of track that over time, we have the, you know, the, the observations by our, our partner in this, that the, the numbers have been fairly leveled in recent years and, you know, showing those stats is not a bad thing at all. And I guess we don't want to shy away from facts. So I think, and we can put it on there as a, as a question mark and we can come back to it at the end. But Counsel, Ms. Vella, did you want to?
No, I just, I was looking to the director for input if that would be for 2018 content or if that would be future.
Through, through you Chair, the, the data can be gathered, but I think if we were going to report out on that data, it's likely best to put it in context of the deer management program in general. So I'd be cautious about just providing pure statistics without analysis that goes along with it.
I think we all agree on that because there's also been that caution put forward by the partners that the, the numbers of deer picked up, it's not a direct proxy for the number of deer. So we have to be a bit cautious about that overall, but it is an indicator, so, and one of the few we have. Counselor Zelka?
I appreciate the fact that we're having this discussion because these are, this is such an important, one of many, such important initiatives of this council. And to not address it at all, I think by its absence is saying something. So I absolutely agree, it needs to be in context if we are going to address it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Appleton?
Oh, thank you Chair. When, and through you to staff, I, I guess, when I, when I think about engineering and public works, aside from. when I, when I think about Engineering and Public Works, aside from all the other great work that gets done, um, one of the uh, key resources that, that people in the community talk about is the transfer station. Um, and there's a ton of time, effort and work that goes into managing that, both from a, a staff point of view. Um, there's, there's a lot of management of inflow of people, materials, outflow, those kinds of things, and I'm just wondering, I, I know that in the previous years' report, we kind of have a, a table of, of quantities, and I'm just wondering whether or not there's a, a way of sort of capturing some of the, some of the metrics that are around that specifically about how we're diverting materials, um, you know, because we do accept things like paints and batteries and those kinds of things, and I think that those things would be, uh, interesting for people to, to understand. I think everybody, uh, really appreciates the transfer station as someplace where they can sort of just magically take everything that they, uh, that they have available to them, and, and they really appreciate it. If you started to put some numbers around that, I think that that would be really interesting. Uh, and it isn't necessarily a, a metrics comment, but just further to that point, I would also say um, it might be useful for people when talking about uh, solid waste and, and, and recycling facilities to just understand kind of who the district deals with, where those materials end up, how they get managed. Um, obviously they don't stay at the transfer station, so I think people might be interested in, in understanding how we contract those services, where, how those materials get dealt with.
First of all, I, I Mr. Haran, would you like to have any, I think that's a good thing to add into the future.
Uh, through you, Chair, I, I totally agree, and I think if we put it in the future uh, pile, because I, I, there's a lot of, uh, great questions that count, or, uh, points that Counsel Appleton brought up that we're thinking similarly uh, in Engineering Services around, um, how to define levels, levels of service of waste management in Oak Bay, uh, and there's a lot of, uh, ins and outs and questions about that, and trying to figure out how to report out on, on performance in twenty eighteen, there, it's, it's a challenge, so what we do is what we've been doing. Uh, but going forward, I, I think there's a, to make good decisions about the future, um, it, it's a good time to start thinking about what we would, how we measure success going forward.
Thank you, and I have to give Counsel Appleton five bonus counselor points for using transfer station and not the dump. Which is the, everybody else calls it, yes. Is there anything else for, uh, Engineering? Oh yeah, Counsel Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just, um, on your first bullet point there, uh, Mr. Haran, um, given the age of the infrastructure and a lot of the work that we hope to do going forward, you talk about improved, uh, reporting on maintenance management metrics. Um, it might be interesting to, to capture scheduled and unscheduled maintenance events, um, because I would hope that as improvements, uh, are carried out going forward, that we, we should see some reduction in unscheduled maintenance events taking place, which is an improvement in efficiency and effectiveness of, of what we're doing.
Mr. Haran?
Uh, through you, Chair, another excellent suggestion, and that's, uh, that, that very point is lumped into that future bit about maintenance management metrics. Um, measuring the ratios of preventative maintenance, in other words, planned maintenance that you wanted to do versus corrective maintenance, where something's broken and now you're fixing it. Uh, it's cheaper to do things when you've planned it. Um, and, uh, there's, so, th- there's a lot of, a lot in there around getting better about getting ahead of the maintenance planning so that we don't have, uh, uh, emergency situations and so on. So that's part of the, the future planning for our maintenance management.
Thank you, and I thank you, Counsel Patterson, for raising that. I think it's really important way for us to measure some success. That's the only way we're gonna start saving some money, is to start shifting like that. I, I noticed we have some pad planning here, is that our official taper is now answering questions as we need to transfer the piece, and maybe we can get someone to help, uh, Ms. Costin over there. Um, is there anything else that, uh, engineering and planning, or engineering and public works questions? I will just throw my two cents in here. One is, uh, it might be nice to throw in we, a lot of our statistics come from our regional partners, like the CRD. You mentioned the water quality, but there's also the storm water quality reports, there's the overflow from the, during storm events in the Hummer and, and other Rutland and other catchment areas that should be trending down as we invest in other areas, and it would be nice maybe to see some of those stats as well available. Uh, and those don't take a lot of time and energy to capture, we just essentially get them from our partners, so uh, just throw that out there to think about, when, what else we have available that are relevant to Oak Bay, but but we don't have to work too hard at, at throwing into the, into the mix. Uh, and the other thing I would just throw in here, and this is really a, a broader piece of, of just making sure that our, mm, this is a future for sure. Um, but we have some key priorities as a council. There's the um, uh, the, obviously the asset management plan, and where we're at with that, how far we are in terms of the, uh, the road paving, um, and there's, uh, the housing framework and how far along we are in that prospect, and I think those, having, highlighting those in somewhere in the, in the document is sort of, is, is the key things that we're trying to accomplish uh, by the end of this term and what we can get to. I think it'd be very helpful as well to, to track, but that would be again for a future, not for this one, because we're looking back at twenty eighteen. Okay?
So, um, that was a great segue into how we're gonna report on asset management in twenty eighteen. So, um, I'm gonna hand this one over to Dan, um, but I think this section being included as a new section in the annual report really indicates that staff are hearing loud and clear how important this issue is for the, for certainly for council, but for our community as a whole, so uh, this is one of two new sections that are proposed. Both are clearly linked to council's strategic priorities, so over to Dan.
Uh, so, just before I start, uh, talking about the contents of what's there, just a, as a, to have everyone on the same page, uh, in Oak Bay, the, um, the, the asset management policy and the strategy around asset management, uh, that was endorsed by the council has a very clear definition that comes from Asset Management B.C. about what, what sustainable service delivery means. Uh, and because it's connected to the next, uh, thing that we'll be talking about, the next couple of slides, and some of the stuff that's already, I'm just gonna go through that very quickly so that everyone's on the same page. Uh, sustainable service delivery, um, and I'm quoting here, ensures community service needs and how those services are delivered in a socially, economically and environmentally responsible manner, uh, that, so that they do not compromise the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Um, so, when we talk about sustainable service delivery in Oak Bay, generally it means the asset management program. Uh, so in this twenty eighteen annual report, it's going to, it's a new section, so there will be um, information in there about what the district's achieved around asset management. So that's an approved endorsed asset management policy, uh, and a strategy, which basically means the creation of a program, so a group of projects that have, um, defined goals, start times, end times, uh, you know, some of them very specifically underway, uh, and some of them planned for the future. So all that information that was reported on in various meetings and committee and council meetings can kind of be lumped into, what did the district achieve in twenty eighteen? Um, so basically a program update, uh, on asset management is what can be achieved in this report coming up. Uh, we can point to the future, as well on what the plans are. Uh, so in future annual reports, i- it would be again, a program update. So the major um, projects that are scheduled for twenty nineteen, the first one is the, uh, that's been funded is the Long-Term Financial Sustainability Plan, uh, which is around, um, looking at revenues and expenditures over a twenty-year period to be able to say, wh- what is sustainable for the district? So that's a deliverable for this year. Next year we'll be able to, to report out on the results of that work. Um, as well, planned for this year is a human resources plan, uh, which is really around, uh, incorporating the key tasks and projects around, uh, around human resources. So what sort of team does the district require uh, to deliver on sustainable services? How best to attract good staff? How best to retain good staff? And, um, and to develop the practices and programs related to the concept of being an employer of choice, so we can report out uh, next year on some of those activities and, and, uh, related to human resources. And finally, uh, the master plans, which are the component projects, the main ones related to infrastructure in asset management programs, so sewer, storm, water, uh, and natural assets. So twenty nineteen we'll have, um, we're currently reviewing a water master plan, which is, uh, basically an asset management plan for the water system. Uh, and then the, uh, and then the next steps for the other asset plans, uh, going forward. And then, uh, I guess I'm, we're ready for questions for this section, and this, I guess before I, we open it to questions though, this is really, it's key here is that yes, as Director of Engineering Services, I'm talking about this stuff, but really the asset management program is a, is a district-wide, um, program. So it, it really is, uh, the questions can be headed to any direction.
Uh, any questions on this from council? Comments? I'll throw them. All right, happy comments, that's good. The, uh, I just added, oh, Counsel Patterson?
Just, uh, just one in the handout package. I, 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 I do like the, the charts that are there that are the amortization expense per capita and the comparisons to the, um, average municipal in the CRD and in B.C. I think, I think those are really um, uh, important parts of the information piece that residents need to know.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to think on that list of master plans, there's nothing in there on the roads. And while we don't sort of have a, we have a pavement management system, but maybe measuring our, you know, our, our identified dollar amount and where we're at comparison to that, or the number of roads uh, meters, you, you, we do it as stats in terms of how many meters or square meters we cover, but maybe something along the lines of, of where we're getting to on the asset management portion.
Uh, just your worship, uh, so in, in, under where it says master plans, the, the transportation fits under the et cetera bit, there's, there's a few other, uh, so, so there's definitely uh, it's, it's not necessarily started as a, as a discrete project yet, but there is a, a net, a need, and it's part of the asset management program to, to, to figure out transportation as a whole. So that includes things like infrastructure, um, intersection upgrades, crosswalks, but also surface and, and safety in general.
Fair enough, perfect. I know it wouldn't be missed in the big picture, I just, it wasn't on here, so I thought I'd raise that. Um, thank you very much for that. Let's move on to the, uh, economic sustainability.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is, uh, related to council's strategic priority about community health and resilience, and we've tackled this in the traditional three categories, the first being economic sustainability. Uh, and this was actually, um, probably for staff, putting this together, it was kind of the feel-good part of the annual report, because it's like, there's a lot of great stuff going on. So, these are the things we put under economic sustainability, uh, to start with. So uh, the district participated in regional buyers groups for a supply of election equipment, which resulted in a fifty percent, uh, reduction on costs for the bulk buy rate. Uh, we have financial participation in the South Island Prosperity Partnership, who were just at, uh, council the other night. Uh, we participate in the Greater Victoria Joint Purchasing Group, which gives us more bang for the proverbial buck. Uh, this is where we lump fire department participation in charitable events, but really I could put them in a few different sections, but this is where they landed for tonight. Uh, fire department response to after-hour infrastructure incidents. This is, um, an interesting one. This is a longstanding practice where, um, they sort of can go out and, uh, it creates savings to both the homeowner if they, if they have to provide after-hours uh, infrastructure shut-off or things like that. Uh, it provides, uh, cost savings to the district as well. Uh, we also have data from the Energy Report for Municipal Buildings, uh, that we'll start to draw on. And I believe Mr. Herman, which would be this in your handout, is going to arrange a presentation to council on that package. Uh, and then we have the larger document, uh, which, uh, we'll have a link to. Uh, the date on it is twenty fifteen sixteen, but I think it transcends those particular years, so it's the Strategic Energy Management Plan for the district. We'll be drawing on that. Uh, we can talk about the LED lights' cost savings. Um, certainly while we've created, uh, savings, uh, prices have gone up, but if we hadn't created those savings, you can see what the trend would have been. Uh, and then we can also talk about the cubic meters of water purchased from the CRD. So some staff ideas for future annual report content, um, looking to other partnerships for bulk, uh, purchase opportunities. Other partnerships related to economic development, uh, we might be able to report out on those. Uh, and so back to the first section on economic sustainability, if, if council has any other ideas for twenty eighteen.
Counsel Green?
Thank you, and forgive me, I haven't looked at twenty seventeen in great detail. Um, so I might be repeating something that, that already exists, but I was thinking of the BIA, our support of the BIA and, and the Oak Bay Tourism Committee. Both of those do contribute to economic sustainability, um, locally. Um, and I know we also provide grants to each of them, so I just wondered if that was, those were two partnerships that seem to be missing. Um, so those are my-
We'll capture those.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Green. Anything else?
Okay, I, uh, just a couple, just one thing. I, there was a mention here, the highlighting the fire department participation in charitable events. I, I think it's it'd be, be nice sort of culturally for us to celebrate, there are other charitable things that happen, or there's a this year there's a Tour de Rock, uh, rider from our police department going in. Uh, there's gonna be some staff participation in things like the Ride Don't Hide event. Uh, and I think, you know, culturally we wanna be, you know, doing things like United Way programs, because they build, uh, team building and stuff, so it'd be nice to maybe just capture that in a broader sense, and then highlight some of the, like, the work that the Terrible Foundation does under that. Thank you.
So, environmental sustainability. Uh, so we can report out for twenty eighteen, we assisted in funding the removal of three derelict vessels from Cabaret Bay. Uh, we saw the step code implementation. Uh, carbon neutral calculations, that CARP reporting, again, linking back to that handout. Uh, we participated in the Bowker Creek Initiative, uh, both in bi-monthly coordination meetings, and we partnered in the daylighting feasibility study. Uh, we had a certain number of meters of bike lanes installed. Um, impact reports on the foreshore were undertaken. Uh, we had a number of combined, uh, sewer overflows that we can report out on. Again, it's that uh, actual picture. I, I refer to it as the good, the bad and the ugly, but I think it's, uh, it's an honest snapshot. Um, waste management tonnage metrics, uh, again, that's what we can provide in twenty eighteen, but with that eye to an expanded uh, reporting out going forward. And, uh, just sort of a fun fact, the fire department used of expired fire extinguishers for training purposes, so no waste going on there. Um, so going forward, uh, there'll be reporting on the recommitment to reduce the carbon footprint, and, and that's in relation to that uh, declaration of, um, uh, what was the wording for that?
Uh, climate emergency.
Thank you, climate emergency. Um, reporting on action plans resulting from the impact reports I referred to, reporting on future projects related to multimodal transportation, reporting on the upland sewer separation projects and elimination of those combined, uh, overflows. Tracking non-revenue water and reducing that number as a target, and tracking inflow and infiltration rates. So again, those are, those are eyes forward. Um, does council have any input for the twenty eighteen annual report beyond what's listed?
That's my drop of a question, ask that question. Counsel Zalka?
Thank you, that's an excellent list, and, uh, it'll be, I'm struggling to, to add to it. Um, I don't know whether we have the stats available to us or not, but it'd be very, um, interesting to know the, um, uh, utilization of the, um, uh, plug-in, uh, meter, uh, in our, in our, in our parking lot. Um, I don't know whether, I, I, it's operated by, by, by flow or whatever they're called, um, but if we can get those numbers, that might be useful for, at least for that. I know there's also another one at the, at School Board, and another one at, at Oak Bay, um, uh, Hotel. It'd be useful to know the utilization.
Can I, I just, I noticed that's going in the future, but I think those are stats you probably have from the provider right now.
We'll capture it under both, and we'll see where we can get it for you.
It's actually included now, because we've had that running for a couple of years now, and maybe we have some, it'd be nice to see where that's trending.
And I'm also very pleased to see the, the Bowker Creek, uh, being highlighted in, in the numbers here. That's a, that's a fabulous, um, uh, a natural asset in the, in the community. Thank you.
Counsel Appleton?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, and through you to staff. I, and, and I, I very much appreciate the, uh, the inclusion of, uh, uh, carbon footprint metrics, um, in future annual report content. Uh, you know, thank you very much for sort of picking up on, on that, that, that need for a revised metric in that, in that regard, and I'm just wondering, you know, we, in, in terms of the two thousand and eighteen report, we're kind of working with the existing CARP materials and the stuff that we have available to us. I'm just wondering whether it might be possible to, this is not necessarily a metric-related thing, but again, bit of an explanatory component to be able to include in the annual report. Essentially some, you know, some explanatory language to, to just explain how CARP and, and the existing GHG tracking metrics work for the district, and relate that to this council's strategic priority for GHG reductions, sort of pointing the way to a new metric in the future, so, just, not that there, there are certain limitations to the existing system, that it's, it's, it's to do a certain job. Um, and we want to sort of convey, I think, to the public that we're looking at a more holistic management of, of GHG- Um, and we want to sort of convey, I think, to the public that we're looking at a more holistic management of, of GHGs. And so we need some, some additional, well, that we need additional metrics in the future.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Counsel Zelka?
Uh, if I may add, uh, on top of what Counselor Appleton suggests, um, the, um, uh, there, if I remember correctly, there is a, um, a reserve fund related to the, uh, to the, um, uh, carbon neutral calculations, uh, that, uh, the mayor would be much more familiar with than, than I. And this might be an appropriate place to, to highlight, uh, the fact that we are essentially paying ourselves for some of the carbon, uh, savings that we, that could then be used potentially for future work. I'm not quite sure how.
The only, the only issue with that is, uh, we don't pay ourselves anymore because we've achieved, we don't have to provide offsets anymore. Um, so it'd be hard one to report on because we'd be reporting zeros. So we were just reporting on the reserve fund itself. Counsel Green?
Um, I know we referred to it earlier. Should we, um, in this section as well, mention the urban forest strategy? Because, um, it is a form of environmental sustainability, certainly for, for the district. Mr. Herman, do you have a comment or, because I know you'll mention it in, in your section, but I just, again, it's a climate change element, I guess. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, from my perspective, um, it doesn't matter to me where it gets listed or if it's listed more than once. I suspect there might be an issue around space availability perhaps or something, but I'm, I'm completely open to that.
Thanks. Uh, so perhaps in this section, we could put a slightly different lens on it. Uh, and so we'll explore that possibility. Bonnie's captured that.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Zelka.
Um, this is a bit of a shot in the dark and I'm certainly not wanting to suggest any, uh, future or, or, uh, or new initiatives in this area. But if we, uh, and I don't know if there are any, but if there happen to be any, um, uh, district, uh, programs available, uh, for homeowners, uh, with respect to, to assisting their house with, housing, housing with respect to making them, um, uh, less efficient, sorry, more efficient to run, less, uh, less expensive to run. I know there's provincial and federal programs available. I wasn't sure whether we have anything at the district level yet. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is one of those ones that it's, it's actually fantastic to see the effort to, to capture these together. Um, the metrics are obviously hard, like hard numbers. Um, but I think it's important for us to start and to start considering them and, and, and working with what we can do anyway. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Counsel, any other questions? Nope, okay.
So, social sustainability. So for 2018, we'd like to report out on, um, the Victoria Crossing Guard Association, how we support them. How we support, uh, space, uh, availability for scouts, guides, lawn bowling, search and rescue. Uh, we'll report out on the VERX partnership, the Oak Bay Volunteer Services, the HCA Working Group completion of the draft HCA. Fire Department Public Education and Awareness Programs, Health and Wellness Programs for Members. Uh, well, here's where we've, uh, addressed those approximately 56 block watches. I keep calling them block parties, but that's different. Police School Liaison, we have a full-time member position there. Uh, Police Participation and Greater Victoria Diversity Advisory Committee. Uh, we have two members on that. And we have four additional bike-trained police officers, which brings us to 70% of our police officers now being bike-trained. Uh, some staff ideas for future annual report content. So of course, the housing analysis with steps to increase housing options within the district will feature prominently going forward. Uh, Andy had mentioned that police program adaptation to community needs and how that can change based on either the police board, um, direction or if they themselves initiate a new initiative.
Counsel Green?
I was just thinking through you to our CEO, a couple of things that aren't reflected and, and they reflect differently, I think. One is the Monterey Center. Um, it has a huge role in this community for social sustainability and belonging. And I know it's reflected through, um, Mr. Herman's, uh, area, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way it can be reflected differently. And the other one are the neighborhood block parties and, and like it or not, they're really popular. And they, they really bring neighbors together and neighborhoods together. And I know that, um, I believe Sarah tracks them through letters of permission. Or maybe it's Deb's department. I'm not sure. Um, so I, I, you know, we might want to report out on how many block parties occurred, if we can do that without much trouble, um, last year. Because I know in my case, they, they make a huge difference to our neighborhood. They, they welcome newcomers as well. So I think they're a huge part of our social fabric. Thank you.
Counsel Patterson and Counsel Zelka?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one thing that we, it hasn't come up in any of this, but I, I think that it goes under social sustainability, is our relationship with First Nations and any steps that we are taking to strengthen those relationships.
Counsel Zelka?
Um, excellent suggestion. Thank you. Uh, community, community, um, for example. Um, uh, I, I think this is an excellent, uh, place, um, to maybe, uh, highlight, uh, the work we're doing with UWSS and possibly PUDAC. Uh, for me, the whole initiative and the whole work around, um, uh, the work with the deer, uh, uh, I feel fully falls within this area of social sustainability. Knowing what some of the other programs had done in the past and, and, uh, and seeing how the society, uh, the community is coming together in some ways around the, the, the solution, the solution that council, um, uh, chose on this one. So I feel it would be helpful if there was any place to find, to find, to highlight it somewhere in here. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Counsel Appleton?
Thank you, Worship. Um, just very quickly, just in, in terms of the staff's ideas for future content, talking about including the housing analysis in this component, in this area, um, I'd just like to lend my support to that and kind of draw a big line underneath it and say, yes, please. Um, the provision of different housing options and a diversity of housing options, including affordable housing options, is sort of key to the long-term social health of our community. I think that that's what's being picked up here on this recommendation. So I'd just like to lend my support to that.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? Uh, I might just add, uh, there's a, there is, uh, not massive, but substantial funding by, uh, Oak Bay to some of the regional, regional arts, regional housing. Uh, those, some of those other projects, and it might be worth just noting those as, as, as part of our piece. And again, if we, if we, if we record those, then we can track those over time and see how we're, uh, how we're doing. And, um, uh, the other thing I would just suggest, the heritage conservation areas in here, I, we, council had treated that very much like a land use application. I don't know that it is a social connection piece, but I think it does belong under the reporting, under the, the building and planning. I'll leave that, but I just think that might be a better place for it to, to report out on. And the other thing I think is worth noting on here is, uh, just in general terms, just commenting on that, on the, on the, on the number of, the fact that council, councillors sit on a number of regional bodies and connections. So we have council, nae at the, uh, in the arts regionally at the, at the CRD. We have, uh, water, we have, uh, the housing connections, we have the, uh, the CRD, uh, climate action piece that Counsel Appleton's on. So there's, there's just, there's a number of those, those functions, I think, that it's just worth highlighting the fact that council does more than here. That they're actively involved at a regional level, uh, to bring some of those social issues and deal with them, so. I'll leave it to where you put it. I just think it's worth noting. Counsel Green?
And on the, on that note, also the local committees and commissions and groups that we work with. I think that's really important. And we, if it's not too much trouble, we can just look at the list where, where the, the mayor makes those assignments. But I think that's really important as well in terms of social. Anyway, council profile.
I'll, I'll throw my two cents of caution in. If we list specifics, it becomes, uh, what if you miss something situation? Uh, I think just, I would just suggest that just capturing that fact that it changes over time, but it's just the reality is that all of council does a lot of work regionally, uh, and a lot of these are social connection type issues and environmental issues and things. And I, I'll leave it to how easy it is to be specific and how easy it's not. But again, this is a typical year where we've, we've had an election and the people shifted partway through. So are you reporting in the first half of the year, the second half, and who's assigned on those questions is, is, makes it a bit more difficult in 2018. Is there anything else that, that's, oh, look at that. It's, I have one minute to go. So that's my warning sign. Um, is there anything else that people have a question or comments additions? No, thank you.
Okay, so this is, uh, the last new section of the annual, 2018 annual report. And this is where you're going to see some augmenting of the financial section. And Counselor Patterson had referred to that, uh, in, as it relates to the handout. So, uh, added some, uh, narratives and some visuals. So I'll hand that over to Debbie.
Thank you. So this section actually provides a snapshot summary of the financial statements and the financial position of the district, which hopefully sheds a bit more light and is an easier read than the financial statements themselves. Each year, all municipalities provide financial information to the province in a consistent format. And that allows us to then compare our position with other municipalities in the CRD and also, uh, other municipalities in BC. The document provides more context around some of the numbers. For example, although we show an increase of 9.1 million in financial assets, that doesn't mean we have an additional 9.1 million to spend. In fact, that amount includes other commitments such as deposits held, uh, projects carried forward that have already been committed. And it also includes a large amount of grants receivable in 2018. So this document attempts to provide a bit more clarification to the financial position of the municipality.
All right. I, I'm happy with a thumbs up. If there's any, are there any other comments on the? Okay, thumbs up. All right. Thank you for, for doing. I think it's, it's very much appreciated to do that. It's, it's always hard to analyze and compare. And, and again, it, I would always just caution, we always try and do this in a, in a way that's reportable year over year, so we can go back and compare previous years. So let's, let's come up with a good format that's replicatable over the time. Thank you. Is there anything else that hasn't been captured here by, in this discussion? I, I have a couple and I, I'm just going to raise them now and, and they're all futures, so don't panic. Um, one is, uh, just a broad question of, uh, it would be nice to have some understanding of how feasible it is to, to participate more in the Open Data Initiative or ODI. Um, not, not so much for this, but just so we can make just the raw data available to the, to the broader public and let other people do some number crunching and, and come up with some innovative ways of reporting. Um, because where that's been done in the past, it's, it's brought us some pretty info, interesting insights where people have more specific views that we might not have thought of. The, I touched on that one already. Obviously, I just wanted to highlight, we've talked about this a few times and it's the understanding. But the, the, the calendar that's put forward for this year is, is perfect. And I think it's just understood at this table, want to repeat it, that the goal is to move that farther forward. So we're not at their, at their regulatory deadlines. We're trying to get this more, more, more closely aligned to the year end. Um, so that it's, it has a bit more, more meaning. We're not halfway through the year and we're getting to this stuff. Um, and the other, maybe this is a question I can ask of staff, but there are some, uh, ISO, uh, makes some standards for municipalities for reporting, uh, both for quality management, but also just for reporting purposes, to do comparisons. And obviously the provincial auditor general, uh, does some comparators and some, some, uh, some numbers that they look at in these things. And so, and for that, it would make sense for us if we're, you know, if they asked those questions, it would be nice to have that data available. So, uh, are there, are those things that we might want to start incorporating in future? Some of that data so that it's, it's consistent with other jurisdictions and in alignment with the provincial auditor, uh, municipal auditor general. I see Mr. Jones come forward to answer this question.
Yeah, rush the mic. Yours, so that there's two areas. So you have your ISO 9000, which is really around, uh, looking at the quality of, uh, to be honest, it's mostly products in the commercial sector. But there, there has been, uh, attempts to, uh, use that, uh, as well to look at quality of services. And, uh, there are some municipalities that have tried that. I think, uh, most, uh, of, uh, the ISO is, uh, that municipalities have uh, looked at was around the 14,000, which is really around the environment. So the, the question there is what, uh, how do the services that we deliver, the things we do, impact the environment? So, um, there are a number of municipalities that have looked at that. And essentially what both of those do, uh, the 9,000 and the 14,000. So, uh, sorry, I should have s- so this is the international, uh, standard, uh, organization, right? So this, this is an organization that says, here is how, uh, you should consider, uh, measuring your performance. And again, one's on products and services and the others in relation to the environment. And, uh, so different municipalities have tried to do this. And it's certainly something we could come back and talk to council about and say, here's, uh, some opportunities and what costs, uh, there may be. Essentially, at the end of the day, what it is, is you have a third-party auditor come in and look at what you're doing and say, yes, you are performing to a certain standard that would give you basically accreditation for, uh, these various, uh, ISO, uh, opportunities. So we, we, we can come back to you and, uh, see if there's an opportunity for us to do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking you to do it now for sure. I just, uh, throwing it out there. It was, it was used recently by SIP to compare various jurisdictions and some of their, their measures. Uh, and I'll end up, and, and again, not looking for an answer now, but is there, is there any, uh, ability to look at what the auditor general looks at from the municipal side? And just make sure that, you know, if they're, if they would normally ask us for data, uh, if we start collecting that data over time, and that would help us sort of give, sort of get in front of some of those questions that might come forward.
Your worship, absolutely. So we'll, we'll look at and see what kind of data we collect and, uh, what kind of data might be required by, uh, uh, the ISO and see how those compare and what we might need.
I appreciate that. As, again, as a future, but I think it makes sense just to try and find, give some guidance for standardization. So thank you. Counsel Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Um, excellent suggestions. Um, I know we have a number of partners that we've sort of talked about, but there were one or two that, uh, might, um, if we can get some data from them, it might be helpful in, in, with respect to the environmental sustainability. If I remember correctly, uh, the, uh, deal we have with the bike share folks, I think if I remember correctly, the, the, the contract we had with them, uh, suggested that, that they would supply data to us with, I'm not quite sure what the state of that is. However, that data might be relevant and possibly beneficial for our annual report if it's potentially available. And likewise, the, uh, uh, Oak Bay supports the car share program. Uh, I don't know whether we want to at least highlight that as part of our environmental, uh, work. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Green?
I just have two more suggestions for 2019. Um, so departments at a glance, I, I like that idea of just a quick. And the other one is fast facts about the municipality and/or departments. And those were two things from the Port Albertini report. That actually Counsel Nae told me she really liked as well. So I'm, I'm not the only one. And that's not to say that we don't love our report, but there were some interesting ideas that came forward that were new. So, um, that, for your consideration. Thanks.
Counsel Nae?
Just very quick, um, from the other report, three points. Um, I noticed, uh, two of the reports put the demographics and a little map in their AGM. And I thought, thought that was useful. And the final thing I have to say is the org structure map. Um, it's the visual that's bothering me. It's the way the departments are lined up like this because you don't work like that anymore. You work more hol- so if there's any ways to get that visual more circular to show the interconnectivity.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion. Like a Wordle. That's all we need. Counsel Appleton?
Thank you, Worship. And just very briefly, I, I was wondering, um, whether or not we might be able to include something that was explanatory regarding the strategic priorities themselves. In the current format, there's the strategic priorities and identifies what they are, uh, and then talks about the progress made to, uh, achieving those, which makes complete sense. Uh, but I'm just wondering whether or not there might be the ability to just have a descriptor that says, this is why this strategic objective was chosen. And this is, the, this is what's hoped to be achieved through selecting that as a strategic objective.
Okay. Yeah, Counsel Green, one more thing. Just one more.
One more thing, um, and then I won't say anymore. Under the council profile section, would it be possible to put contact information for councillors, i.e. the email address and/or council telephone number? Just, I mean, contact, you know, the council email and council phone number if applicable. Thank you.
Okay, we have a lot of ideas here, just adding a few things to your workload, no big deal. How do you want to go about just sort of distilling this or getting some direction from council so that we're in agreement about what we would, and I think, I want to be careful here not to say do this, because I think we have to trust staff to a certain degree to say, you know, these are good ideas, but we may not be able to do all of them, so if we, I'm going to be very cautious if we do any motions here, that they're going to be sort of best effort, unless there's something really critical that people want in this particular one. So how would you like to handle this, Ms. Rell?
So I feel pretty confident, and I know the department heads do as well, about the items in the PowerPoint, those are doable. So if I could just back up a bit, your worship, so we've sort of got two sections of information here. One would be the future annual reports, and I think what we'd like to do is get the 2018 done, published, and then come back with these future ideas and say, let's get really clear on what we're going to start measuring for 2020. For 2018, what I'd like to do is take the items in the blue boxes, those first boxes that you saw and gave the nod to, and then these other items, council requests for 2018 content, will also be captured in the minutes. I did take the liberty of putting forward a draft recommendation if the committee was so inclined, and that would be to direct staff to incorporate 2018 annual report new content as proposed in the workshop PowerPoint attached to and forming part of the May 16th Special Committee of the whole minutes. So that would capture the blue box info, and the minutes will also capture the flip-charted 2018 info. If staff ran up against any stumbling blocks in what we've committed to, then we'll keep you appraised as we put this together.
Thank you very much. Before we move on completely, I need to just open it up to the audience, if anybody else wants to come forward and add to this conversation, so I mentioned this a little earlier, and I got caught up in the excitement of it all, so if you don't mind coming forward, just state your name, municipality of residence, and just write your name down on the sheet there if you don't mind as well.
James Sultanam, South Oak Bay. Thank you for the opportunity. First of all, thanks for putting this together, I think this is an incredible opportunity, long overdue. I like to see people discuss indicators, and I'm a person who reads the report, and this is something that I like doing with pressure. So my comments are very brief because I'm tired and I think everybody's tired as well. First with the requests, I'd like, when I read this report, I don't like to see numbers, just raw numbers, so what I do request is that when you put numbers, all department, put things in context. This is absolutely important, and give us the significance. One thing that I like to see is how do numbers relate to your plans? Every department, you have plans, you have five-year plans, and how do numbers, how do I see those numbers? How do they reflect to council's strategic priorities, for example? How do departments talk to each other? So how do those numbers relate? So when you're talking about a project, for example, if you give me a number and this number is related to a project, do not assume that I'm just naming the project, that I know what the project is. If there's no room or not enough room to tell me in detail what the project is, just in one sentence, how does the project affect Oak Bay, for example, if this project has to do with the CRD? Or if there's not enough room, just give me a website, for example. I purchased this number of blah, 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 related to asphalt, for example. This doesn't mean anything to me if it's not put in context. If it's for a water project related to the CRD, what is the impact of this? Or give me direction as to where I'm going to find more information about it. One thing that I agree with the mayor is, I really would like to see a comparison of the budget and the financial performance. Why I'd like to see this is because every department plans for, we have, you know, department chiefs budgeting, right? When you budget, you are planning on what you're going to do, and this itself is a skill. So when I'm budgeting, I'm going to have an impact on how much I'm going to charge for taxes at the end of the day. So when I'm budgeting and I have a lot of surplus, I'm going to affect taxpayers. So if I'm unable to deliver what I budgeted, there's something wrong. Does it make sense?
Yeah, I think we, I think we understand that.
So, and this has to do with performance. So at which point am I going to start thinking about even HR performance that we never talk about it? So this I'd like to see in the future, in the parking lot.
No, no, I think it's important, so there's two things there. One, the, I think, I captured, I'm glad you agree with me on one thing, that comparison of the budget and the actuals, I think, is something that we'll strive for. The HR performance will never have an annual report, I can pretty much guarantee that just because it's a, it's a HR thing, but we are striving now to get some of the HR metrics and things in there so we can, we can track some of those pieces.
So just to finish this, what I would like to see also is to have an honest report, I would like to see a section with shortcomings. So we would like to showcase ourselves, but shortcomings and opportunities, are we going to have a section with that? I'd like to see it. I'm just playing devil's advocate, things that I'd like to see as I read the report, we have to be sincere, like we are, we're good, but we're not perfect.
So Mr. Sultanam, I don't know if you came in a couple of minutes late, one of the early slides that Ms. Rell had up there was addressing exactly that, just the fact that this has to be an accurate reflection of what was achieved, not achieved, so that we can use it as a tool to understand how to fix. Otherwise, you're right, it's not much use to us as a measurement tool if we don't, if it doesn't reflect things. I think that's one of the advantages of coming up with some of these metrics. I'll say this out loud, I think it's important, it gives us an honest assessment tool to look at, right? Rather than picking and choosing on a year-over-year basis what looks good, what doesn't, it forces us into a very honest accounting of where we're trending, and I think that's one of the goals of this discussion, is to get to that point where we're making decisions eyes wide open of where we're at, so. Thanks for raising that.
Yeah. And finally, I absolutely love those three new sections, including the environmental one, I think they're very good, yeah, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sultanam. Anybody else wish to come forward? No? All right, we'll come back to this table. So we have a suggested motion here. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll move the motion, a second.
Move a second, any further discussion? Just so I'm clear on this one, we're saying yes to all the blue stuff that the staff have put forward. The other pieces that are marked up here in the black for 2018 consideration, the staff will take that away and look at what can and can't be incorporated at this point and do what they can and report back on what's included and what's not, is that a fair?
Yeah, so if there's something that isn't achievable in that 2018 list, we'll come back to you and let you know, and then we'll shift it to the parking lot, but these lists in their entirety will form part of the minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, I think that's it, unless anybody else has any other motions to make? Got to give people the chance, nope, okay, an emotion to return? Seconded, all those in favor, opposed, unopposed, thank you very much, we went a little longer than intended, but it was a good discussion. I don't know if this is still recording, I guess not, but it's too late for the, it was too late for the official recording probably, but thank you so much. Thank you, all of you, there's an enormous amount of work put into this, I'll maybe say that more formally later, but thank you, it was really, it was wonderful.